Into order, we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Newton Azor?
Present.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Monague?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council must discuss, won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take the comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. First up is Debbie Orger.
At this time, no more any comments.
Thank you. Item three in your agenda packet is Human Relations Commission 2025-2027 Work Plan Presentations, Kim Ledain, HRC Chair, Allison Dean, pages two through eight in your packet for discussion and action.
Nope, that would have been a blooper on some TV show somewhere. All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're going to share a presentation really quick, so please bear with me. All right, so, um, Kim Ledain, HRC Staff Member Liaison, and...
I'm Allison Dean, I'm the Chair of the HRC.
So, we just wanted to check in, um, as, we're excited to be here today. This has kind of been a long time waiting, Allison will kind of fill in as we go along. But why we're here today is hopefully to get some additional feedback from you all on a work plan that has been put together. This is something that's taken place over the last three months. And at the end, we're going to be looking for some additional recommendations, discussions on what this Citizen Advisory Group should be taking and moving forward. Just want to make sure you all got the packet and that you were able to take a look through the work plan. On there, you will see Tammy's name listed next to some possible tasks with the way we prepare memos and presentation materials for council meetings. Her name was added to that prior to the resignation, so please know that in those spots, instead of her name, instead it'll be something that'll be determined at an upcoming, at an upcoming meeting. So, I'll turn it on over to Allison.
Sure. So, we threw these, threw these up there just so folks could see, we were using the Charter as a way to really frame the work that we did with Deputy City Manager Barbara Perota. So, as Kim said, in the last, the last three months, we've been doing these work sessions to come up with a work plan in front of you, but what's important is some of the context, I'm going to go ahead and, lots, is some of the context for the work plan. So, in March of 2024, one of our commission members was forwarded an email from the mayor, and this email was from an Albany constituent discussing a racist incident she experienced. This being forwarded from the mayor to our commission prompted our commission to ask the question, what is within our power if we are receiving this? If this is our responsibility, what should we be doing differently? And it suddenly it became clear that we needed to better understand the council's charge for our work. So, um, that, that really led us to, um, to doing this work, and Kim suggested, scheduled these sessions with Kayla Barbara Perota to help us obtain a clearer vision of the purpose, mission, and objectives of the HRC through a discussion with you all. In these work sessions, so we had three work sessions. The first was really to identify the core actions around the Charter. In doing so, we then, as a group, proposed some actions that we felt like would help realize that Charter in the city. The second session that we had in March was really getting us to think more about the, the impact and effort of each of these things and helped us to identify where we felt it was best to, to put our effort. And then lastly, last, last month, we worked on the drafted work plan, identified divisions of labor, and did a little restructuring on timeline that we felt like would be helpful in terms of kind of building, building our name out in the community and spacing our efforts to get out, to engage the community, and get feedback to inform our future initiatives and events. So, you all have the work plan that we put together, and as Kim said, what it is that we need from you as a council is what action items you want us to begin with based on the plan in front of you. And if there are any action items that are outlined that you feel are not feasible, we also would need to know that. We have a review, just in case anything, the goals, we've broken down into three. So, build trust and visibility within the community, advance inclusive government, and center and amplify marginalized voices.
Can you leave the slide up so we can have that in front of us? Thank you.
Sure. So, in talking through the work plan, the first goal was broken down into tangible items, so participate in three community events per year, so figuring out what the, as you'll see in the timeline, it ranges from May, you know, two weeks from now through December, so this is for the full entirety of that. So, talking about what events could potentially look like, getting on the schedule, preparing for them, and then actually doing the tabling. Expand online presence, so once again, that would start in June and work through September, and then designing topic tea events, starting quarterly, the middle of the summer, where people would be invited to the Riverfront Community Center to have just a casual conversation, to talk about some of these more meaty topics, in the hopes of bringing together folks that... Civil dialogue. Yeah, just civil dialogue. To cultivate some of that across communities. Take the next one? Sure. Our second goal is advance inclusive government, and so with that, and I know this has been something that has been brought up before, about working towards a list of proclamations to be reviewed and signed by council, as well as, one of the things that kind of rose to the top of our discussions was about what it would look like to have a youth advisory council. So, so often, youth are left out of the conversation about what's happening in their city because they do not have voting rights, but it doesn't mean that they're not valued members of our community. And then lastly, the third goal was to work to center and amplify marginalized voices within our community, and a part of this is to create some community focus groups. It's really hard for us to know what different voices in the community need if we're not making an opportunity to listen to them. And, and that would begin in, ideally in June, and, and we understand that that would continue on as that's a more labor-intensive process.
Yeah. I think, you know, I was thinking when you were talking about the community focus groups, that would be a really great place to start, to kind of look for citizen advisory group members as well, so that we can be intentional about being diverse in our selections for citizen advisory groups. I think that that would be, it would be a great help.
Yeah, we're Shaya member, and so if we can make it a feed two birds with one seed situation, I love it.
Yeah. Great. Fantastic.
You all brought up the Youth Advisory Council, which is something that I've brought up several times, so I think this is a real good place to start and keep the conversation going. I do have a question regarding the, um, having people come to the Riverfront Community Center and sort of have a dialogue. How do you plan to sort of safeguard that and ensure that it's civil discussion versus just like a venting fest, or, you know, how do you, what plans or sort of protocols or procedures do you plan to have in place for that?
Great question. We've not gotten into the detail on that, but I, I believe that there are some of us who are skilled in facilitation within the group, but I also think that there's a way for us, it doesn't necessarily mean that those of us on the commission are facilitating that, right? That we might be working with different groups that have skilled facilitators to be able to do that work. Additionally, we know that there are other neighboring communities that have tried something like this. I believe in Philomath, it's called Philomath Fellowship, that they bring folks together. So, we'd be also interested in reaching out to other communities that are doing this to learn from their lessons, so that hopefully ours would be a little bit smoother as it hit the ground running. Good question.
So, so for me, I ceased doing proclamations after the things we went through, at councils being attacked, their information being put out in the community, so I'm not going to be doing any proclamations.
So then what I'm hearing, if I'm right, is that as we're moving forward, under Goal One, we're fine, and council is hoping that this group will go forth with doing the community events, working to expand an online presence, and designing these topic teas. Thumbs up on that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, it's just a question about the online presence, is that just through the City of Albany's page, or is this going to be a separate, like, online presence page, or...
It would be using the City of Albany's page. And with, with the intention of maybe amplifying some, some heritage months.
Okay, cool.
My question was, I think you guys said three events, um, community events, so they would also include like school events, like the colleges, the high schools, you know, where you can actually kind of recruit, in a sense, citizen advisory and youth, would you be doing that too?
I really like that idea, you know, we, again, this was, these were kind of higher level plans, we haven't gotten into the details of that, but I think that's a great suggestion. Absolutely.
I think more than three, I mean...
If you have the capacity to, like, we don't want to overwhelm you, but I think it's important, because they, they have like the cultural day at like West Albany High School, they have something, the career day at like North Albany, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, North Albany Middle School, just so that, you know, if especially it's about the youth, I think that's really good. And it's also where the parents sometimes will be too, so it's a good way to be visible outside of just our hallmark sort of events.
Yeah, I like the way you're thinking because, I think, because this, because this is a volunteer-based group, right? As much as possible, we need to, as I said before, like, feed two birds with one seed, right? You know, try to find where we can overlap our, our initiatives and do so in a wise way, wise time, time-wise way.
When you said that, it just made me think, like, even if you guys aren't necessarily there, but if you have literature for one of us, the counselors who are going to these events, would be really dope that we could have and just be like, hey, we also have this really wonderful commission that is doing X, Y, and Z, and therefore, if you can't be there because of capacity and, like, I'm already going, you might as well just, you know, give me the literature.
Do we still have HRC shirts and, you know, things for tabling? Are those...
We have some tabling supplies, but is that something that we're, in the memo, you'll see we request $500 per year in order to help with such community events and community groups. I know we're in the budgeting process, but if that isn't available elsewhere, the Parks and Recreation Commission, we can set aside funds from there to help with that.
I think three events is good, I think 12 events is better. And if you, if you need help with that, like, like Dr. McGee said, just, yeah, please make sure you let us know. I also think $500 is good, I think $1,000 is better. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, along that, I was thinking six events to start.
And that is the goal for the next calendar year, knowing that we're coming into this essentially halfway through. The hope would be that at least once every two months, moving forward, that that would be kind of our, our cadence.
Definitely an increase as time goes on, yeah.
What about comment?
Counselor Smith?
This all sounds practical and doable, and I understand completely why you've set the number of things that you want to be involved in where you set it. I went through a two-year work plan process with another organization that I'm a part of, just a la, last year, and we set minimum involvement, planning on doing more, because we, we wanted to, to give ourselves a few wins. And it's, it's easy, it gets easier if you get something done and get to understand what you've got ahead of you. I, I think this, that's a great place to start, and I like to see this outlined in this way. This is the, the most direction the commission has ever had, and I'm glad that, that staff helped you get here. It's, human relations are hard to define and hard to... Yeah, it is squishy, and so when, if you can, if you can get it into a table, it's a good place to start after all this time.
Yeah, and, you know, to, to your point about being realistic, realistic and idealistic with how, how many, you know, how many events we've picked, look, this, this commission has historically had issues with attendance, right? And so I think trying to rein in, like, I would love for us to be at 12 events. What's realistic when we're, you know, when we're coming off of some time where it was difficult for us to have quorum, right? And so, now, I think that's more consistent, and so we're excited to be able to, to take this and go out and, and get doing some things, yeah. And so with this said, like, pretty much every May, you'll probably see us moving forward, and this will be our checkpoint that we'll be able to come back and present to council and say, okay, here is our work plan for the last year, here's what we were able to do, and then hopefully come with the next round of plans to stretch it a little bit more and a little bit more based on capacity. So, I would look forward to seeing you all every May and chatting about HRC activities.
Counselor Monague had something?
I was just say, I was going to say, I appreciate you having the, you know, who's, who's this assigned to, and I'm hoping that that will come with the, you know, kind of report out who completed these. That way it gives us an opportunity to have conversations with our appointees about, you know, what is the barrier for you to participate a little more? Can you, you know, can you take a couple more action items, or, you know, hey, I see your name a lot, is that a lot for you? You know, just so we can have those conversations with our appointees, so I appreciate that.
Counselor Thompson, you have anything?
No, I, sorry, I came in a little bit late, but, but I read the packet and I, you know, I, I served on the Human Relations Commission shortly after it was first created, and it's long been a struggle to figure out what's our, our role, and I think you've landed on some just real tangible items, like you said, and, and a realistic number to tackle, and I just say kudos and wish you all the best and hope to see you in May with some...
Thank you.
Progress.
All right, so we're moving forward with all the items except for proclamations and Goal Two.
Well, I have one thing I want to add. So, Allison, was it Allison, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, when I get emails like that, they usually come through one of my other email addresses, very rarely do they come through the city. Was that okay with me sending that forward?
Yeah, I think we, what it prompted was this conversation where we said, what are we supposed to do with this? You know, that, and, and that's really what sparked so much of this conversation is just going like, well, we're an advisory commission, and we've been given somebody's really difficult report of an incident of bias, and so what's within the realm of our power, our capacity as a commission?
Would bias training be something that you could set up for them?
So, we're able to, the Department of Justice has their, their report on bias incidents, and in all honesty, that's where we sent them, just because that is a very robust system, and that's the one that police departments and all of that are able to, to track across the state in order to see if there are hot pocket areas or to guide resources. So, that's inevitably what we ended up sending them to. Well, I think we have a lot of wonderful people on our commission that, outside of our heartfelt, I'm very sorry that that has happened to you in our community, that isn't what we want to see. That was about the extent of, of what the commission is able to provide as non-trained, well, as lay folks who are trying to do the best for their community. So, so if additional incidents were to occur in the future and they come by this group, they're discussed at a, at a commission meeting. We've sent cards in the past when we've been able to get, you know, contact information, but outside of that, it's pretty much directing to resources that we know about.
Thank you. Counselor Newton Azor?
And stuff like that could, could potentially come up in your tea talks, right? That, that, if, if you're aware of some incidents that are happening, that could become a, a good topic for discussion.
Counselor McGee?
I just want to say, good work, Dr. Ally and staff and Kim, because, and team, because this sort of says like a blueprint for what I was saying when I was like, I think that each commission should come at some point and sort of present to us and let us know their requests, what they're doing, so this really serves as like a blueprint for other commissions, and so very good on this, I'm, yeah. I mean, Dr. Ally is my appointee, just.
And I just, you know, I, I think it's important to also just, to extend that thanks to Kayla Barbara Perota, because she really helped to facilitate that and I think move us in this direction, so.
Kayla been on the job.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is Item Four, Airport Economic and Fiscal Analysis Project Update. Ryan Beef, is that correct? Beef, okay. Pages nine, pages nine through 11 in your packet.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a brief update on the development of a project to complete an economic and fiscal analysis of the city's airport. The last time this project was discussed in the setting was in November, when Director Bailey provided an update on the request for proposals that was being developed for this project at that time. Most of the information that's relevant shared today is provided in that memo, but I will go over a few things and we can answer any questions at the end. For some background, the primary driver for this project is that operating revenue is not keeping pace with rising expenditures. Additionally, this study supports a key objective in the city's strategic plan to explore options for the airport to ensure the best possible use for the Albany community. The project is not an effort to close the airport, the project is a structured effort that will evaluate possible ways to keep current operations of the airport afloat, but will also explore feasible alternative scenarios for the property with the intent of providing as much information as possible to help council decide the best way to, to move forward with the project, or with the airport. As outlined in the memo, the RFP process led to the award of the project to ECO Northwest at the end of April. ECO Northwest is leading a team that includes Tiberius Solutions, a public finance firm, and Precision Approach Engineering, and Airport Planning and Engineering Firm. Projects such as this are unique, and a highlight of ECO Northwest was their previous, previous experience on two studies, very similar to this one that we are starting here in Albany. One of those projects was in Cascade Locks, Oregon, and the other in Kennewick, Washington. As outlined in the memo, the approach to this project is broken into two main phases. There's obviously a lot more detail, but in short, the first phase will provide a comprehensive evaluation of the property and the finances and economic position of the airport and identify any critical impediments to changing the current use. The second phase will evaluate the scenarios for future use. Phase one is anticipated to take about four months, and phase two is anticipated to take about five, putting the completion date into the beginning of 2026. Council will probably hear back from the project team at the end of, at the end of phase one, but there may be need for discussion sooner as we, and we'll find that out as we get into details. So, we should have all the signatures on the contract this week, and we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for next week, so things are rolling, and that's all I have for the update today. We can answer any questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you for your report. Commissioner Orger, do you have any questions?
Yeah, you, Orger, and I'm the Chair of the...
Come to the microphone?
Yes. Debbie Orger, and I'm the Chair of the Steering Committee for the newly-formed Albany Air Museum Wings of History, which is in the 1929 hangar. And so my question is, how are you and who are you going to interview for those of us who are involved directly with the airport?
Well, you, of course, and then I think the, the Airport Commission meets next week, this week or next week, so we'll, there'll be outreach. That's, that's a key component of the whole project, is outreach and discussions with stakeholders. And I, I think in fact, stakeholder feedback is, may be like the solution to part of what's happening here is, is that involvement. So, we haven't laid out the schedule for when to talk to everybody, but, but that's, that's coming up.
Okay.
So, and, and, you know, we can, we can get together after this and make a list and start that work right now, so, yeah. So, our kickoff's next week, and, and that's when we'll start to put the, put the structure together and dates and who and when and stuff like that.
Okay.
If that helps. It's a little vague.
That really helps, yes, because you have two businesses on the airport. You have the flight school, and then you have another business of... Building the interiors for the RVs. So, you know, those are, of course, major stakeholders, along with other pilots, too.
Yes, understood, yeah, there's, it's a, it's a big group and it's a big project, and, and outreach is, is a critical, critical component, so I look forward to talking to you more soon.
Okay. So, after the meeting?
Sure, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have anything else? I'm, I'm looking forward to your results.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is Number Six, Discussion Regarding Planning Division Fee Adjustments. Dave Man, Dave Martineau, page 12 of your packet.
Good afternoon, Council. So, this is the time of the year that we look at making adjustments to planning fees based on the difference in the Consumer Price Index for wage-grade earners, and after May 15th, we should have the April 2025 CPI figures, in which case I will put together a memo with a fee schedule showing what the fees would be based on that annual adjustment, and that would be scheduled for the June 11th council meeting. We are only adding one new fee that we haven't had here before, and that new fee is a planning re-review fee.
Re-review?
Re-review fee for $50 per revision. That's because when we have... That's because when we have corrections required or we have plans that change while they're in the middle of being reviewed, we need to go back in and be able to review what those changes were. And so to, to help offset the cost of staff time to do that, we are proposing that one new fee.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Montague? Oh, I'm sorry. Any other counselors? For now, I'll get, I'll talk with you later. I got a question about something else, sorry.
Okay.
I just took a flight yesterday, so.
All good.
Thank you. See you on the 11th?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Next on tonight's agenda is utility rate adjustments, pages, oh, excuse me. Rates of 2025, 2027, biennium, Chris Bailey, Director Bailey, pages 13 through 26 of your packet. Director, how are you doing?
Fine, thank you. I feel like I'm really close. If they moved this table up, I don't know, I feel really close. Okay. Maybe I'm just going through something. And I'll share my screen. Hey. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today I'm going to be providing a presentation on the three water utilities, including requests for rate adjustments. This is a fairly robust presentation is one way to describe it. I did try to pare it down this year. You can tell me if I actually made any progress. But these rates form the foundation of the department, which is almost half of the city's budget. So it's important, I think, to share with you and with the community what we do with the money that they give us and why we feel like we need a rate increase. One important note, two notes actually. So I'm doing the presentation tonight and then at Wednesday's meeting, there'll be a public hearing where we're asking the council to discuss and vote on each of these rate increases. So that will be coming up on Wednesday. I'm not doing this whole presentation again. So hopefully it will be faster. And then the other thing is that this year is a little bit different. We're asking the council to approve rate increases for the full biennium instead of one year at a time. Typically, we do it one year at a time. We're trying to do two years at a time to be efficient. Although if something unforeseen happens, we can come back next year and adjust if we need to. Okay. So I hope that you had a chance to read the memo and the attachment. It has a lot of information. I'm going to go over some of that in the presentation, but not all of it. So if anyone wants more information, the attachment in the council packet has quite a bit of detail. I'm going to cover three basic things tonight. What do the utility rates pay for? Why are we requesting an adjustment? And then the rate requests for the biennium as well as forecasts. So each of the three funds is managed individually, but we take the same approach with each of them. The first thing that we budget for is to pay our debt obligations. We don't have debt in all of the funds. The stormwater fund does not have debt. But all of the debt payments, when they are taken out, the repayment design includes the use of both rate revenue and system development charge revenue. And I'll discuss that a little bit more further, further on. After we do that, we keep the existing systems working and functioning. So our next allocation of funds is towards operations and maintenance costs. And then the final category of funding, what we have left over, basically we put into the capital projects. So it's important to remember that if we find ourselves without enough money left over, we either have to raise rates to generate more revenue or reduce our capital expenditures. And reducing capital expenditures only works for so long. And then you have emergencies and you have to fix those problems anyway. So I'll talk about each of these a little bit more detail. First, quickly about debt. We try to accomplish our work without taking on debts as a city. That's generally our approach. But sometimes we have needs that go beyond our ability to pay as we go. So we work with our finance department to try to find our lease cost options, which in the water and sewer fund have typically been either clean water revolving loan fund loans or drinking water revolving loans. And those typically, they're administered by the state and they typically have a really low interest rate associated with them. In the sewer fund, we have two loans. We have a loan we took out to build the water reclamation facility and talking water gardens. That annual debt payment for next year is a little over $4.6 million. We also took out a smaller clean water loan to address the riverfront interceptor and construct the wet weather lift station at Montgomery Street and Water Avenue a few years ago. That was done in 2021. And the annual debt payment for that is $613,000. In the water fund, we have one loan that was taken out to construct the Albany-Millersburg water treatment plant and some other associated facilities. And the annual debt payment for that is $1.92 million. So those come right off the top. The next category of expenditures we look at are operations and maintenance. And this is the largest group of expenditures that we have that rate revenue pays for. O and M includes personnel, materials, capital maintenance and regulatory requirements. Timely and sufficient investment in our, our O and M needs saves money in the long term by reducing the risk of system failures, emergency repairs or regulatory non-compliance. We have literally thousands of assets in each of our systems. There's a shortlist here. And instead of you reading this boring screen, I'm going to talk about them while I show you some pictures. So altogether, we have about 600 miles of main pipe when you add up water, sewer and storm lines. We have 21,000 water connections and 19,000 wastewater connections. We have almost 20 pumping facilities for both water and sewer. We have thousands of manholes, thousands of catch basins, thousands of valves and hydrants. That doesn't include the three separate treatment plants, each of which has its own hundreds or thousands of critical parts. All of those systems are both aging and growing. We also have about 400 public vegetated stormwater facilities and roughly the same number of private stormwater facilities, all of which have to be inspected and maintained. And then the bottom line is that the operation and maintenance of our systems that provide clean, safe drinking water and that collect and clean all of the city's wastewater and that manage the impacts of stormwater is the primary answer to the question of where does this money go? Mostly it goes to O and M. Our final area of expenditures is capital spending. Capital projects are things that are familiar to most of us, like digging up a pipe and replacing it. But it also includes projects that are unseen by the public, often such as capital projects that repair or improve treatment facilities or lift stations. Capital projects also include facility planning and master planning, which anticipates the needs of our systems in the future. And we also provide reviews for current development projects to ensure that those new developments are properly connecting to or extending our existing systems for their own needs and for the benefit of the system in the future. All of that ensures system reliability and reduces the risk of failures and provides capacity we need as the city grows. We've worked with the council to establish capital funding targets for water, sewer and stormwater. In all of our utilities, one of our priorities is to identify and repair failing lines before they become emergencies. So we have a targeted asset management replacement program in both water and sewer that we fund every year to help replace these pipes. And the results you can see in the water system is that our water loss is down to single digit percentages, which is really, really good in the industry. And we virtually eliminated emergency sewer main failures, which some of you might remember 15 or 20 years ago were regular occurrences. The capital targets also have to fund the other major capital needs though, besides just the pipe replacements. So we might have a significant sewer lift station that needs to be rebuilt with larger pumps, for instance. Or we might have a large sewer interceptor or water transmission main that needs to be built, extended or enlarged. In summary, the level of investment in water and sewer is accomplishing what we're trying to get done. But stormwater is not in quite such a good shape. The stormwater utility is new. It was started in about 2018. And we don't have enough revenue in the stormwater fund to develop that annual pipe replacement program where we identify in the wastewater system, we identify the top, whatever, pick your number, 50, 100. The top 10 pipe segments, basically, we get, and we identify them. The ones that are most likely to fail are most impactful if they fail. And we create annual programs to address those and get those replaced as quickly as we can. We don't do, do that in stormwater because we don't have as much funding for stormwater. But the stormwater system has something like eight times worse pipes than the wastewater system. The pipes in the stormwater system are in, typically in very poor shape. So we're trying to build to a capital target where we can address that type of systematic pipe replacement that gets those things replaced before they fail. So why would we be considering a rate increase? Every year, we look at the three funds as compared to our actual revenues and our expenditure targets, and we analyze where we are and what, if any, rate increase we would need to keep making progress towards our service goals. Typically, there are three major reasons why we would increase, consider a rate adjustment. Number one, inflation, of course, which affects both operating costs, where you can see it in things like consumable supplies or power or personnel. It also affects capital costs, but differently. We use a different rate or a different inflationary index for capital projects than we use for operating costs, which are more aligned with basic consumer increases. The second major thing is that regulatory compliance can also affect our expenses. We just finished the first cycle of the stormwater MS4 NPDS permit. That permit is being rewritten by DEQ now. And we're working to provide comments to try to keep it as reasonable as we can. But it will definitely be more stringent when it is reissued. We also are about to receive our draft wastewater NPDS permit, which is what allows us to discharge from the WRF to the Willamette River. And our existing permit was issued in the year 2000. Think about where you were in 2000. And expired in 2005. And the regulations around wastewater discharge have gotten significantly more stringent in the last 25 years. So we know we're going to have to make some capital investments at the wastewater plant to address the permit. We've already planned for some of those, but definitely affects our need for additional funding in the sewer fund. And the last category of major reasons behind rate increases is capital project work. We just reviewed the capital improvement plan a few weeks ago. You might remember that's a really long list of unfunded projects in the back of each fund. So these projects have to be built. We try to get them in a prioritized manner. But there's far more work that needs to be done than we have funding for. So those capital targets I discussed are really our attempt with the council to find a reasonable amount of capital funding that can get work done to help prevent emergencies and maintain compliance. Also trying not to put too great of a burden on the community. I've shown this little bitty diagram here before, but this is really a simple explanation of how revenue is put to use in the water utilities. Each utility operates as an enterprise fund, which means that it has to support itself and only itself. And so utility payments go to provide the services that we give to the community in each utility. If you want to continue to maintain the level of service that we're providing this year, we're going to have to raise our revenue a little bit because next year it's going to cost more. If you don't want to raise the revenue, then our level of service will go down by a notch because we just won't have the money to do the same things next year as we did this year. So at its most basic, utility payments help us accomplish the level of service that we set in working with the council. In public works, we maintain a five-year forecast for our utilities. We use that information to plan work of both operations and capital programs. Forecasting is not an exact science. These are some of the variables that we try to analyze and look at in our crystal ball to see where we might be for the next five years. It gets harder the further away you get. These things can vary up or down. An example that a lot of people aren't aware of is that our water revenue is actually quite dependent on the weather over which we have zero control. And a hot, dry summer actually typically brings in quite a bit more water revenue than a cool, wet summer would bring in. And we see that in our revenue actuals depending on the weather. So it's very interesting. The opposite thing happens with sewer, whereas if we have a whole lot of flooding and storm, we have to respond to, a lot of times our operating costs will go up. So our expenditures are up higher than our revenue. Okay, I'm going to show you a bunch of graphs now. I'll explain the graph. This is all three utilities and we're showing fiscal year 21 through the current fiscal year. On the left is the sewer bar. It's green. The water fund bar is blue and then the right side is stormwater, which is pink. These are the, just another insider, inside baseball fact. When you see locate marks that are green, those are for sewer on the street. Blue is for water and pink is for stormwater. Yellow is for gas and on and on. Anyway, so these are the colors we use for each of our utilities. This graph is showing the history of rate increases. And I want to point out a couple of things. One, you might notice that the pink bar for stormwater is quite a bit higher than the others. So that was intentional. The stormwater utility was established in 2018. We set a plan with the council at that time to establish the rate at a fairly low amount and then increase it over five years to try to accomplish the goal of getting enough revenue for stormwater, stormwater to pay for its operating needs plus the capital portion of street projects. Prior to the stormwater fund, the street project, the street fund paid for the stormwater portion of street projects, which meant we got less street work done because the streets was paying for streets and storm. So part of the goal of the stormwater utility was to have storm pay for itself, which we have accomplished. So the 17% rate increases ended in fiscal year 24. And in the current fiscal year, we had a 6% rate increase. So those have dropped way down. The other thing I'll point out is the water and sewer rate increases have bounced around and pretty low, but they do bounce around a little bit. And that is exactly in response to those variables that we're trying to predict. And sometimes we're good and sometimes we're not so good. So sometimes we might under guess and we have to raise it a little bit higher the next year. Sometimes we overestimate. Then we can drop it down in the following year. So it sort of bounces around between 2% and 5%. We're always shooting for as low as possible. This graph, same colors. You'll notice the bars are quite different. This is actual revenue dollars that we received over the last five years. And again, I'll start with stormwater. Bless its little heart. It does not get very much revenue compared to the other two. So we are still building the stormwater fund. It still does not have adequate funding to fully manage itself as a utility. So that is why you will see the stormwater rate request is higher than the other two. We're still trying to build that fund up. You'll notice that the sewer and water revenue lines are increasing at, and fairly shallow. You'll notice that the sewer and water revenue lines are increasing at a fairly shallow slope, and we're more or less trying to keep track with inflation in the sewer and water funds. No huge jumps there, which would represent if we had a huge project that needed to be funded by rates, et cetera. We're trying to manage our projects and our rates so that they're acceptable rate increases and still able to get the same level of work done. I'll also have you note the dollar amount on this slide because we're going to compare it to the next one. So the sewer fund receives over $20 million in rate revenue a year. Water, over $15 million. And then we're going to look at the next slide, which is SDC revenue. So first, I'll have you note the scale. Typically, SDC revenue is $1 million or less in water and in sewer. Sewer bounces around a lot, but the thing about SDC revenue is it's entirely dependent on development, what's coming in, what's being developed, and the type of development. So we have this one year where sewer SDC revenue shot up. And what happens sometimes is you might have a business come in that has quite a demand or puts quite a demand on the sanitary sewer system, but doesn't put as much demand on water. And the SDCs are calculated independently of each other based on the demand that that development puts on the system. So you could see a really high SDC for one thing and not for another. Transportation, if that were in here, would be the same way. They kind of are all over the place, really hard to predict. But in general, we're not receiving a whole lot of money in system development charges and poor stormwater. Again, we just enacted an SDC for Storm in 2024, so practically no SDC revenue in the stormwater fund right now. And on this slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about SDC revenue and how it interacts with rate revenue. We're here tonight to discuss rates, but I try to make this point because they are interrelated. So a lot of you have probably seen this chart before, and I'll describe what it is. This is a table, a chart, that shows how we are paying sewer debt service. It goes back to fiscal year '24 and then forecasts out to the future. So the top line, the dotted line, which is purple, is our total debt service payment. For the upcoming fiscal year, that's over $4.6 million. The next line down, the dash dot line, is how much rates are paying towards debt. The third line down, which is the dash line, is when this debt was taken out, how much were system development charges assigned? How much were they supposed to pay of the debt payment? And the bottom line, the solid line, is how much SDCs are actually paying. So you'll see here, and this has been going on for a couple of years, we have a gap between what SDCs are supposed to pay or were initially assigned to pay and what they're actually paying, and it's about $400,000 a year. That $400,000 has to be made up by ratepayers. So ratepayers are paying more than, quote, their fair share because there's not adequate SDC revenue to pay for that. So how this happens is when we went to build the treatment plant, it was sized not just for today's needs, it was sized for the future. You don't want to go and have to rebuild your treatment plant every other year. So that portion of those facilities that were needed for future growth were assigned, the portion, same portion of debt was assigned to SDCs. So growth would pay for growth. The problem is we aren't bringing in SDC revenue in an adequate amount to pay for that. The debt has to be paid, so the only other source is ratepayers. So this is how, I know that you hear a lot about, we should not charge SDCs for construction. We should charge lower SDCs. SDCs are preventing a certain type of development, this, that, or the other. This is what happens when you don't bring in adequate SDC revenue. Somebody has to pay for the projects that have to be built, and when you don't have SDC revenue, ratepayers have to pay for that. We see this in practice, in reality, both in this debt service payment, but also what happens is in capital projects. So for instance, the Cox Creek Interceptor, which you've heard a lot about, is being replaced and enlarged. The enlargement part is partially to serve current development that has happened, but also because it has to serve new development that is upstream, on the upstream end. So a portion of each segment of that pipe can be paid for with SDC revenue. It depends, the percentage depends on where you are in that pipe, but we don't have any SDC revenue to put towards that pipe. So ratepayers have paid for that pipe, plus we've been able to get some outside assistance. And that's one reason why we're working so hard to try to find outside funding for that project is because it's very expensive. It's really important, but if we had to make ratepayers pay for the whole thing, we would have to have a significant rate increase. So this is just an attempt to try to explain the relationship that sometimes can happen between SDC revenue and rate revenue and why we're trying to keep rate increases down, but there are all these conflicts and complications, so. Okay, moving on. Now I'm going to talk just about sewer rates. Our capital target is $3.8 million, and we are forecasting that we only need a 2% rate increase in sewer for the next foreseeable future. Last year, we thought we would need a 3%, but we're doing pretty well managing the fund. And I think this is just an indication that this is a mature fund. It's well managed, and we aren't seeing huge demands on the sewer utility, so 2% per Water rate forecasts, our capital target in water is $3.2 million. We have not quite reached $3.2 million in capital funding. So that's the main reason why water is a tick above sewer, is we're trying to grow our capital carryover, the availability of capital funds for the water fund. So we're forecasting 3% per year for the next biennium and then 4% in the out years. We could have done 4% for one of these years, but we're trying to be consistent and keep it as low as possible. And forecasting in the out years is so unreliable, we're hopeful that we can maintain with just 3% for the foreseeable future. Stormwater rates, we're down to 4%. We're doing pretty well at recovering funding for the capital projects for the street projects. We have some additional operational needs, but we still think we can manage with 4% per year for the out years. And then once we develop a more robust pipe replacement plan, we might come back and ask this to be increased, but for now, we're at 4% per year. So in summary, for both years, we have both years of the biennium here. We have 2% per year for sewer, 3% per year for water, and 4% per year for stormwater. Again, 4% in stormwater does not work out to a whole lot in dollars, which I'll show you in just a minute. Just note that each of these goes into effect at different points in the year. Sewer would be effective July 1 of this year and then July 1 of '26. Water is January 1 of '26 and then '27. And stormwater, March 1, '26, March 1, '27. Okay, this is a table that we've shown before. So this is an attempt to describe the impact for a typical residential customer. So this is a single dwelling unit residential customer that uses eight units of water a month. Note that in Albany, our single residential customers typically use less than that, but eight is what the statewide comparators use, so that's what we use. And also is in the middle of the stormwater fee. So typical stormwater fee, eight units per month. And this shows by fund, sewer, water, stormwater, the current rate, and then the increased rate with the different increases. So a lot of numbers. I have my next table, hopefully a little bit more simple. So the current fiscal year for all three utilities, the typical residential customer is paying just under $5 a day or $148.98 a month, so $149 a month. With the planned rate increases next year, it would be $5.10 per day or almost $153 a month. And then the following year, another 13 cent per day increase and almost $157 a month. When you average, do the weighted average of all the increases, it works out to 2.6% per year. So kind of pretty close to CPI. The last CPI I saw was 2.2. Here is a table, which is hard to read, of comparison cities. Albany is highlighted in gray, so we're the third highlighted line down. We're just below Lebanon and Sweet Home and just slightly more than Corvallis, Independence, Gresham, Philomath, and Adair Village. So this table shows the Albany rates with all three utilities added in and all of the utilities from the other cities of their current published rates. So they will definitely increase. Everyone is facing the same challenges we are. But the other thing to note, I think, is that we're right in the middle of our comparator cities, which in our immediate area are between $155 and $166 a month, so we're right kind of in that same ballpark. This is a chart that council has asked for in the past, and it's complicated, but this is the non-single-family residential customers, so multifamily, commercial, and industrial. Those rates are very complicated. We have different categories depending on demand and strength and all kinds of things. So we picked out some typical businesses and made them anonymous, and we present their bill here. And then it's compared to the three surrounding big cities, Salem, Corvallis, and Eugene. So we're higher than some, lower than others. It's kind of all over the place. For the non-residential customers, I would just say your bill is going to go up by 2.6% in total. That's really the take-home message. And that is it for today. I know it went by so fast.
Counselor.
Do you have any questions?
Questions for the director? Counselors, Counselor Mark Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. The three SDCs, are they currently at the highest rate allowed that the legislature allows us?
Thank you. I'm so glad I printed out this piece of paper. No. So our water SDC is at its maximum allowable. Wastewater is not. It's at 62% of its maximum allowable. And stormwater is at 20% of its maximum allowable. And we're not talking about transportation or parks, but those are also both below their maximum allowable.
Is there any, do you revisit SDCs on a regular basis?
We do. And Mr. Emmons will be up here later. Our practice is to increase SDCs by the CCI. This year, I'm going to steal his thunder, it was negative. So we're going to recommend keeping them steady where they are because, well, because they're not adequate anyway. Sorry, personal opinion.
CCI?
Construction Cost Index, which is the index that we use for charges and fees related to construction such as SDCs. So that's published by the Engineering News Record in Seattle. It's the industry standard for trying to figure out where construction costs are going. As far as the entire fee, resetting it, we don't typically bring that to the council unless there's a request to do that. We typically are just doing the annual sort of inflationary increases. Whenever we, we just reworked all three of the water SDCs and the transportation SDC to try to make it more scalable for small residential construction. So it's things like that when we talk with the council about what the overall SDC charge is and where they would like it to be. It's a hard discussion because somebody pays. It's hard to figure out who's going to pay.
Counselor Monaghan?
What is your timeline? You might have said this, but what is your timeline for getting the stormwater pipe replacement plan completed?
We don't have a firm timeline yet. We have, all of the stormpipes are, I think we are 100% through the system now, except for the ones we can't get to, which are collapsed or whatever, we can't get the camera through. Kristin probably can tell me better than that, but it's on our list of things to do to develop. I mean, we could generate today the top 10 list of pipes. Trying to calculate the capital target is a little bit more time-intensive, so probably by the next biennium, we'll have that done.
There, Counselors. Counselor Smith?
How many years are left on the AM plant loan?
The water or?
Because that went online in 2005, I think, five or seven?
2034.
Okay.
The first one that will drop off, Mr. Babbitt can correct me if I'm wrong, is the sewer, WRF, and Talking Water Gardens. It's, the last debt payment for that will be in 2030.
Really?
Even though we took it out later. I think we refinanced and we went to a shorter term, I think. And so 2030 is, you know, it's within my retirement window, so. Yeah, it's exciting. And, you know, the question is, what do you do with the rates when you lose that big debt payment? And it's such a fluid environment with the new additional capital needs we're going to have at the treatment plant, do the permit and other things. It's, I would love to be able to say we're just going to like hold rates steady for 20 years and let everything catch up, but it's just not realistic to say we're going to automatically take that off the bill. We probably will have more needs then, and so that will be a discussion with future councils for sure.
Two other things. Yes, you would have more things because the pipes don't stay static either. And people need to get paid and so on. Was that, was that a drone photo of the famous shrub hub I saw in the slides that you showed?
Yes.
Very nice.
Very impressive.
And thank you for explaining the locate colors.
Oh, you're welcome.
My neighborhood has become a crayon box of, and I just didn't know, so now I do.
I know. It's one of the little, you know, the things you learn. And I think white is power.
That was my other question, white and red.
I don't remember. I had, there's a little card. What was that, Rob? Red is power.
That makes sense.
I don't know what white is. Data? Oh, right, where you put the locates, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
Sure.
Counselors, any other questions?
Okay, so this will be Wednesday at a public hearing, and thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Next is the annual Public Works fee, fees, inflationary increase, and transportation system development charge, Robert Emmons. Pages 27 to 38 in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So I'm keeping with the same theme of tonight, which is city fees. And so I'm talking about Public Works fees, and specifically, those include system development charges, post-construction stormwater charges, and connection to city utilities. So those three fee categories there, separate than the utility charge that Chris just talked about, state the obvious there. So there's two points of, two points I want guidance from council on. One is minor edits we are proposing to our transportation system development charge resolution. We'll go over those here in a second. And the second is the inflationary increase for Public Works fees. So first, let's real quickly, the edits that we are proposing to the transportation SDC resolution, those are shown on page, I think, 31 of the packet, of your council packet. They are actually pretty minor changes, adding some explanatory, explanatory language, and then adding an ITE code to Table 2 of the resolution. Those just help people understand how to use the table and add some flexibility to assigning transportation fees to development. So those are pretty minor, more of a housekeeping issue, but I wanted just to bring that up, and that will come back to council on Wednesday night. And the other... And the other, other, I was going to say controversial, maybe it's not so controversial, but is the inflationary, I usually say increase or adjustments to SDCs and post-construction stormwater quality and, and the connection charges. Usually, it's, it's historical average has been 1%, 2%, 3% per year. This year, it's gone down 1.6%. And we use, we use an April to April year-over-year comparison. Oddly enough, if we would have went back to March, to March year-over-year, it actually would have been an increase. Or February to February, you know, we'd be recommending an increase. So kind of, you know, it's, if you think about the trend of inflation, it kind of goes up and goes down. April just so happened to be one of those little downticks. So you can think of it as an anomaly, so to speak, or just kind of a quick downturn of the economy. So that begs the question, what, what do we do? Do we keep it the same? Do we actually decrease the fees? Staff is recommending to, as you know, it's in your packet, to hold the fees steady and not, not to decrease them. I think, I think Chris brought up a great point in her presentation, that SDC revenue already is not enough to pay the debt service that, that has been allocated to it in, in the sewer fund. And also, as Counselor Thompson, you have brought up the question, you know, is the city charging the fees that we can, the allowable fees that we can? And in most cases, we are not. Past councils have elected to kind of set the fees, the maximum allowable. SDC is lower than what we could. So all that really means is that somebody else is going to have to fill in that gap. And somebody else is going to have to pay for, for some of the infrastructure needs that development should be paying for. And that goes to ratepayers, basically. So, so staff is recommending just to keep the fees at the same level and, and not, not reverse them, not go back, so.
I think we're good with leaving them where they are. Thank you.
Well, wait, just aside, and I think my question, it points to where I'm headed, you know, we have to take a vote about it. I mean, we will on Wednesday, but yes, I, I, my sense is that these SDCs, all of them, should be at the highest allowable rate. Growth, and it doesn't even, growth does not pay for itself, and it even wouldn't under that, I realize it, but it would, it would kind of send a message. And so I think everyone needs to pin this conversation when later on, developers come before us and talk about how much, in a total amount, they'll talk about all the dollars and cents that they fork over. But remember that graph. They do not pay nearly. In fact, the previous graph that Chris Bailey had with the fourth $100,000 gap, if you looked at it, even if the SDC funds had been flowing at best they could, there would still be, I couldn't tell what the dollar amount would be, but there still would be a significant gap. So that, that's just my, my sense, one council member, but that's my sense.
Thank you, Counselor. See you Wednesday. Next is business from the council, and I'll start with Counselor McLeod.
Thank you, sir. I attended the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference, where I got to meet counselors from all across Oregon. That was, that was a great experience. And Dr. Counselor McGee spoke at the Women's Caucus forum. That was, that was great to, to hear your, to hear your, your stories. So thank you, thank you for those, those words during the conference. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Monogue?
Yeah, I was able to attend the Wine Walk on First Friday. Excellent event, had a great time, bumped into quite a few people. And I highly recommend anybody check that out in the future. I also want to talk about the handout that's on, on the dais here for you guys. I am proposing a resolution, amending Resolution 7242, which was adopted on June 14th, 2023. I would like to read this amendment. I move that we amend Resolution 7242, adopted on June 14th, 2023, and amend as follows. The City of Albany shall rise the Progress Pride flag at City Hall annually during the month of June, commencing in 2025 and continuing in perpetuity to honor and celebrate Pride Month and the LGBTQIA+ community. That would be Section 1 that would be amended. Section 2 would be amended to include, the city manager is directed to take all necessary action to implement this amendment, including coordinating the procurement and display of the Progress Pride flag in accordance with the provisions of this resolution. And then Section 3 would read, this resolution takes effect immediately upon its adoption.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, then the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor? Next is Counselor Newton Azar?
Yes. Okay, well, first, this is our first meeting of May, so Happy Jewish American Heritage Month, Happy Asian American Heritage Month, Happy Mental Health Awareness Month. I believe it's also Older Americans Month. So there we go. I also am happy that staff had put in a stop sign at Thorn Drive and Jordan Drive. I had a constituent reach out. We've been chatting about this back and forth, so thank you for getting that in. They're sad to lose a cherry tree, but they're happy that if it saves a life, that the stop sign will now be in place. I was also curious if we could look into getting a stop sign added to Elm and 12th, where that is a large section near Tiquina Elementary School, where kids are walking and crossing the street. It's right near Tiquina Elementary School. I was also wondering if I could get an update on our low-income assistance program. I believe that Assistant City Manager Barbara Perota was meeting with someone from the Community Development Commission, and I would love to get an update.
Yes, she, she had to depart for personal family business last week, Kayla did. So she has a meeting with CSC later this week, so she'll be able to provide it as soon as she meets with them.
Okay. Thanks. So maybe by Wednesday?
Sorry, I had to attend a funeral at the end of last week. So I am meeting with Community Services Consortium on Friday to go through the usage of that. We have dug in on our end, just to double-check what the amounts are that are available for that funding. And we do have more than enough funding in there. We could double the program and be fine, so it is primarily an issue of applications. So I am meeting with them on Friday to go over that.
Can we get an accounting of the money as well?
What are you looking for specifically? Just how much has been issued?
How much has been issued? How much is left? Maybe the parameters that CDC is using to disperse funds?
Yeah, that should all be fine for us to pull together, yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you. I also, a quick question for you, City Manager Peter Schrodson. This Friday, we're having a tour for roads?
Right. And I was going to get to that when you get to my, we can cover it now if you like. So we, at the request of the Senate President's Office, we're providing a tour this Friday at 1:00 for Senator Gelsner Bluen and Representative Bossart Davis. I would like to open it up to counselors if they would like to attend. One counselor already has expressed an interest. Of course, I, you know, we can't take four along, but I could take, certainly take two more people if they have time on Friday.
Sure, I'd love to attend.
Yeah, I would, I would too.
Well, I'm already on there, so. If I could step aside, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll coordinate this with the rest of you offline, okay?
Thanks.
Specifically looking at Ward 1 anyway, right?
No, it's a, it's a statewide issue. So it's, it's in support of the transportation package that's in front of the legislature right now. So it's trying to show our representatives, our senators, what the need is locally, so as it fits into that package.
Please, one of y'all talk about the bridge. Just saying. Okay, is that a counselor? Okay, Counselor Mike Thompson, Michael Thompson?
Yeah, I as well attended the League of Oregon Cities. Found it, from the presentations informative, but I agree, the, what I learned from other council members in other cities was just as, as worthwhile. And I also attended, the Landmarks Commission had its Historic Preservation Month and had their preservation awards last week. And that was well-done. Our own Lee Scrotto, the Downtown Association, was awarded, presented with the award, and Veritone Architects was recognized for their work. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Misa McGee?
I have a couple of things. I also attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference, sorry. Last week, Friday, brought my intern, she learned a lot, asked a lot of questions, networked with quite a few people. I'll be connecting with a couple, a counselor from Tewolleton, Bridget, Brooklyn. So I'll be connecting with her soon. And this past Saturday, I was able to attend the Black Youth Suicide Prevention Coalition in Portland. It was really interesting, being that this is Mental Health Awareness Month and this is Mental Health Awareness Week. It's a really informative event, much-needed conversation. And actually, there is someone in our community who was on that coalition, pleasantly surprised to see her, Heather Carmichael. So it was a really, really great event. I was invited by a student from Oregon State. So it was really interesting. I'm glad I got an opportunity to go. And then lastly, Counselor Newton Azar and I participated in the family reading night. Did you get? And I got a nice little, like, thank you, thank you card, right? I think this is me with the brown face. The kids did so good. I'm just like so happy about this. I don't know, this made my nights. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Few things. Wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, Saturday is the annual Big Pickup at the corner of 13th and Industrial Way. We've got, looks like we've got a good cadre of volunteers this year, and that's exciting. We were a little, little thin on the ground last year. And so if you drop by, I will be the one taking your money, and other people will take your junk. The Spring Conference for the League of Oregon Cities, I also attended. I was, I found the most valuable workshops for me were the Counselors' General Workshop in the morning on the first day, when we gathered and just talked about issues that are big deals for us in our, our community and, and dealing with constituents and so on. I was at a table with counselors from Florence, Prineville, the Dalles, and Winston. The, also, the city manager and mayor and I attended the League President's Regional Meeting in Philomath last Friday, discussed the league's revenue. Tell me, they're, they're trying to remake the Oregon revenue system more equitable and, and help us all out more. And it's, they provided us with a guidebook for doing that, and there will be more coming along about that later. I learned a very interesting thing for people who are interested in growth or not growth. Junction City is under a building moratorium at the present time because their sewer plant is maxed out. I did not know that. My niece lives in Junction City. One other, I also attended the Landmarks Commission meeting for their awards, and a third award was given to the Montith Historic Society, which is well-deserved, and if it wasn't for the Montites, none of us would be here. Thank you to Public Works for jumping on a water leak situation in my neighborhood. Four service lines or something had to be replaced, major locate marks, and lots of digging and asphalt and, and drilling and so on. But it was, they got right on it within, I think, within 48 hours of it being reported. And the cascading water running over the curb is no longer cascading. There's dry dirt there now, so thank you very much. I think I'm done.
Thank you. And so everyone of y'all stole my thunder, so I'm going to just get to one thing. I did attend the same events, so, and Landmarks, the whole nine yards. But 2025, if I were mayor contest winners for Albany, we, Matthew, Matt Harrington and I, we went to their schools with their parents, and we recognized a Alison Wagner at North Albany Elementary School. And it was really cool walking in. The kids are like, the mayor's here, the mayor's here. But the look on her face when I announced that she won was priceless, because her parents walked in. And so it was something that I take great joy in. And then on the next day, we went to Memorial Middle School, and our first-place winner for middle school, Ashmeen Larson. We've got it, we did a better job this time, but she won for the middle school. Her essay was phenomenal. And I don't know if you know what I do with those essays and posters. I read the essays four times, looking at our strategic plan with that in mind, and I narrow it down as I go, so that the last time I read them, somebody finds. And so our kids have done a wonderful job, and we entered them in state competition, so I'll have results for that on Wednesday. But I'm pretty excited about the kids this year. That's a lot of work, but it's something I can do at home and, and laugh and talk to my wife about it. And it is something that I hope future mayors continue the project, because the kids are amazing. Our children are absolutely amazing. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They will be here Wednesday night to show their poster and talk about their process. And also, they're going to be here Wednesday night to, Ashmeen's going to read her essay to the people that participate in the meeting. So I'm looking forward to meeting them. Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we did cover the transportation tour this Friday, and there'll be more to follow by email to you. I would like to ask Counselor Monogue and the council for clarification on the motion that Counselor Monogue made. Resolution 7242 covers commemorative flags and flag policy in general. So is the motion meant to replace the whole commemorative flag policy, or is it meant to supplement it?
It is a resolution to amend.
Okay, so just incorporate that language into that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As it's written here, it is a separate resolution to amend that resolution.
Right. I think we could accomplish the same thing just by creating a new, the same resolution with those words incorporated into it.
And I would ask that that be added to the consent agenda for Wednesday, if we can.
Is that it, Peter? Oh, damn, okay. With that, I'll adjourn, adjourn the, oh, adjourn the meeting. I'll, I'll see you Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in Chambers for some special presentations and a lot of work, but that's a good thing for us. And I'll adjourn the meeting at 5:27.